Good evening, welcome to the Village Board Trustees Meeting, Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, November 8th. If you're watching live on Monday, November 8th, we encourage you to call in with any questions or comments you might have. The call-in number is 769-1677. I can report today for the first time that, as always, you can watch our meetings on Cablevision, PCTV Channel 76, and the government channel 78. The education channel is 77, but Verizon has now assigned a government channel to us. PCTV on Verizon is 36. The government channel, which is not up and running right now, but maybe up and running within a day or several, is Channel 39, and the education channel is 32. So just to recap that, Cablevision is 76 for PCTV, 77 for the education channel, 78 for government. Verizon FiOS is 36 for PCTV, 32 for education, and 39 for government.
Sounds like we're playing the lottery.
It does sound like we're playing the lottery. And as we commented in our work session, why the numbers aren't in order, it's just the great imponderables of the cable TV world.
I'm feeling it, too.
Our next work session is on Monday, November 15 at 7:00 PM, and our next regular meeting is on Monday, November 22 at 8:00 PM with a work session at 7:00. And that is a happy evening, our annual youth recognition night, so we encourage you to tune in. It's a night when a lot of students in Pleasantville are honored for the volunteer work they do. Just want to remind everybody that this Thursday is Veterans Day. The village offices are closed.
And the mayor is under the weather.
Pardon me, I'm...
Getting us all sick here tonight.
I'm practicing universal precautions here.
The rest of the board is...
In other words, I'm sneezing into my sleep. It's universal.
Veterans Day, November 11th. There are two ceremonies going on in our area. At 11:00 AM, our Fager Nickel American Legion post will be, under the guidance of Commander Bert Ruiz, will be hosting the annual Veterans Day ceremony that takes place in Memorial Plaza, so that is November 11th, Thursday, November 11th at 11:00 AM. And we also have a note here from Drew McFadden, who is the commander of the Gilbert Row post of the American Legion based in Thornwood, and they will be hosting a ceremony over at the Hawthorne Thornwood Chamber of Commerce building that takes place at 10:30 AM. So it's a very nice event, both of these, and I encourage you to attend. Couple of other things to remind people...
Can I just say something about that?
Yes.
I found out that at ours, the one that Bert Ruiz is running, they have an acapella group that will sing the National Anthem in five-part harmony.
It's the high school camarada.
No, it was a...I thought it was another...is that...it is? Or maybe this is somewhere...
That's my understanding, no.
But it's supposed to be, you know, beautiful. But I thought that the same woman from last year...
She will also be there, Theresa Brown.
It's her daughter.
Her daughter is in camarada.
Aha, okay, there you go.
The connections are all there.
All there, okay. So no, that'll be wonderful.
It's a great event and great music, as well as...
And it's gonna be held where?
The Pleasantville event is in Memorial Plaza, adjacent to the gazebo. We've had some questions about working on the gazebo, and we'll know for sure tomorrow exactly where it is, but around about the gazebo on the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month, that's...
Because the guy behind the camera asked me...
Our Mr. State.
A couple of other things to report. Westchester County has undertaken, excuse me again, a street-level photography project and has contracted with a company called Pictraometry International of Rochester to collect street-level photography throughout the county to improve the efficiency and fairness of property assessment and to assist in emergency response. So as part of this work, an employee from a company called Facet Technology will be driving a vehicle marked Facet Technology Corporation, driving along all roadways in the county, photographing properties from the right-of-way. The sole purpose is to capture these photographs of structures or undeveloped projects for this project. All work will be conducted in the public right-of-way, and no entry onto private property is authorized or will be attempted.
What about privacy issues? Has Google found out? Have we thought about that?
Well, it's not us, it's the county Department of Information Technology.
Has anybody given any thought to that? It turns out when Google did this, you know, certain things were captured on film that they...that people would rather not have had captured on film.
I thought that was a subject of a significant case in France, but in this country, I know my house is on Google from at least three, if not four, different perspectives. All the main streets, Bedford Road for one, all the houses have already been Googled, and I imagine probably...
No, I'm not saying it's just that the occasional person who, you know, their...the camera captured something that they didn't want to have on the film. I mean, not that I'm saying it's going on here, but this is an issue that Google, you know, had to answer for, for certain things. I just wonder what...I mean, it is...
This is government, man. You can't, you know...
Well, Brian, Brian...
They're allowed to...
Why don't they just go on Google Street?
We're to the wise, keep your curtains down when they're coming through town.
Exactly. We'll warn everybody.
People have to be careful. The state had an issue with the cameras they're putting on the sawmill because some of those have wide lenses, and they were getting into backyards where people expected privacy if they're fenced in and the like. So, I mean, but if it's the public view...
What's this for exactly? But why are they doing this?
The purpose of this is to improve the efficiency and fairness of property assessment and to assist in emergency response.
But what does that mean? Why, how is that useful?
Why don't you go to the Board of Legislators and find us...go to the Board of Legislators and ask them if they're the ones that passed that.
I don't understand how remotely that could help anybody do anything in the real world. This sounds like...
Well, I don't know about that.
It sounds like a waste of money.
Well, it may be, it may not be. It's not a decision we have anything to do with. If you...just hear me out, hear me out. If you'd like to give opposition to it, David Jackson, Executive Director of the Westchester County Tax Commission, 914-995-4325, is the contact person.
Write that, no phone number down. I'll give you a copy of this letter if you want.
Yeah, I can give you a copy.
You know, it doesn't answer the ultimate question, what's this all about? I just don't think this sounds like something people should be doing.
Okay, well, if you want to track it down, by all means, here, take this copy of the letter.
I need lasers.
Sorry.
Wait here.
Let it go through.
If you have UV rays, we can sterilize it.
My colleagues are trying to catch it.
You're being mean.
Did you email that?
I took a bottle for a relative.
I'm ready to take it from you.
I'm almost done with announcements, and then they can stop razzing me. Also received a letter from Cablevision indicating that rate adjustments to most of the Cablevision packages will be increased an average of 2.88 percent. And those rate changes will be effective on December 8. By Cablevision's report, all customers are notified of these changes in advance through bill inserts or letters, and the new rate information will be available on the website, which is www.Optimum.com.
And that's a relief because we've been paying too little...
Thirty days prior.
No, they're passing down the Fox settlement.
Yeah. So, that is the report. And then I wanted to mention a couple of other things, and one is, and Mindy can shed more light on this, Westchester County has an annual hearing, I guess, regarding the county budget.
Right, and normally the meeting is held...there's one meeting in the northern part of the county and one meeting in the southern part of the county. And legislator Nona last year had requested that the meeting in the northern part of the county be held here at Pleasantville, and that request was granted, and it will be held at Pleasantville High School on Tuesday, November 23rd at 7:00 PM in the...I don't even know where it's gonna be. Did I tell you where it is?
I assume it must be the auditorium.
I was assuming so myself, but it could be the library, but I should find that out. I don't get to say that. So it's, you know, it's a great opportunity for...the budget is being released from the county executive tomorrow at a press conference at 11 o'clock. It's probably gonna be on Channel 12, so if you're interested in looking at that. And then the Board of Legislators has a week to sit on it before they start their meetings on Monday, and the budget has to be submitted and approved by December 31st or December...actually, it's December, prior to that, December 15th, is it? I'm not quite sure, but...
So, Mindy, they have these meetings?
Right.
But before we hear the comments from the legislators?
No, it will be during...there'll be legislators there that will answer your questions. The budget will be online, you could look at it, the legislators will be reviewing it, but their final...they're really having a meeting with you because they're gonna make changes to the budget, and you could have input in the changes the legislators would make or make comments to them. It just depends on who shows up at the meetings, and I don't know what kind of a turnout you'll get. Of course, legislator Nona will be there, but I'm not quite sure who else will be there.
I mean, I think it's worth noting that all of us pay significant county tax. It may not be one that you're quite as aware of because it comes as part of your county and town tax bill, but it's a significant amount of money, and it's worth understanding what it pays for.
Right, absolutely.
Legislator Nona has been doing a series of town hall meetings and did one in Mount Pleasant a few weeks ago and one in Pleasantville just last week. And although they don't get a tremendous amount of attendance, it's an interesting opportunity for everybody who comes to actually see what the money is used for and to kick around the kinds of issues that you always hear. Why do we have county government? Connecticut doesn't have counties. Why couldn't we be like Connecticut? And, you know, those are all legitimate questions and questions that John and Dallas, the other legislators, are all well-equipped to answer each from their own perspective, so...
Also, if you wanted, there's a series of meetings being set up at the...that are already set up that are online at the Board of Legislators that will discuss each facet of the budget. So all the legislators will be there discussing the budget and any changes or corrections because the county executive had pledged a 0 percent increase in the tax levy, and now the Board of Legislators has done the same. So in order to do that, there will be some significant cuts in spending and...which will translate, hopefully, not too much in services, but there will be some cuts in service, so...
So worthwhile to attend. And then lastly, I wanted to comment that, as all of us know, we continue to work our way through the tragic incident that took place at the Thornwood Town Center on October 17, when Pace football player was killed in an incident involving the Mount Pleasant Police, the Pleasantville Police, and ultimately a bunch of other jurisdictions as well. It's a circumstance where I want to be clear that the Village of Pleasantville has pledged its full cooperation with every and any legitimate investigating authority. We are not part of the investigation because it took...the incident took place in the town of Mount Pleasant, not in the Village of Pleasantville. We obviously have significant involvement because our officers were involved, but we are not part of the investigation itself, and we've pledged cooperation with the four agencies that are involved in the investigation, they being the Town of Mount Pleasant Police Department, the Westchester County Police, the New York State Police, and the Westchester County District Attorney's Office. So I'm sure you will all be seeing in the newspapers over the coming days and weeks the process through which this is all gonna be worked through. What's going on right now is that the investigation is ongoing and will likely lead to a grand jury presentation by the District Attorney's Office at some point in the future. Difficult to say exactly when. So early, let's see, about a week and a half ago, Chief Charlitty and I had a press conference, and that press conference is available, if anyone is interested, on the PCTV website at PCTV76.org, at which we expressed not only the depth of our feelings about the whole incident, but also the depth of our commitment to participating in any way possible in the investigation, and also made fervently, which I renew tonight, that nobody jump to any conclusions and allow the process to...the investigation to find its way to a conclusion that everybody can trust. So I encourage you to watch that if you are interested at PCTV76.org. We're currently represented by legal counsel and are also working with our insurance company, who will obviously come into play as the process goes forward. With that, we can move to the resolutions. Steve?
Resolve the pre-check registered dated November 8th, 2010, covering check numbers 67830 through 67971 has been reviewed and is hereby approved, is listed below. General fund, $194,265.74. Water fund, $16,289.95. Capital fund, $1,545.21. Refuge fund, $5,640.59. The pool fund, $5,807.52. Trust and agency fund, $9,240.98, are a total of $232,789.99.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees has reviewed the minutes of the meeting held on Monday, October 25th, and they are hereby approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Jonathan?
Resolve that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby accept a donation in the amount of $25 from the Pleasantville Senior Citizens Club for the Senior Citizens Nutritional Program.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much to the Pleasantville Senior Citizens Club, much appreciated. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Brian?
Resolve that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the police chief to close the following streets from 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM for the annual holiday sing and tree lighting festivities at Tree Island. Edgewood Avenue at Manville Road, Great Oak Lane at Edgewood Avenue, and Great Oak Lane at Manville Road.
December 1st, that's the thing.
Yeah, we should include that in the...
On December 1st.
That's December 1st?
Mm-hmm.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is an annual event, and this year, as in some past recent years, the holiday carols will be performed by the Pleasantville Middle School Chorus, and refreshments will be provided by the Pleasantville Chamber of Commerce. All in favor?
Well, I would only say, I would only point out here, Mr. Mayor, that if...right. That if this were asking for funds from the...I love Christmas, by the way, but if this were asking for public funding for the...for what is essentially a religious ceremony, I am opposed to that. But since this is just closing a street for a holiday sing, and I love Christmas, you know, I would do that. I continue, as I have every year since I've been on this board, to urge that the religious congregations in this community pay for the Christmas tree. Thank you.
It's actually called Tree Island. It's not called Christmas Tree Island, and that's very...that was taken out a while ago.
Well, it's funny, in the perks and rec letter, Mindy, it's referred to as Christmas Tree Island.
I know, but that's not what it's referred to officially.
But we all know what it is. And I love Christmas. Nobody celebrates Christmas like me, but I'm just saying...
You're like, you want to take those Easter eggs away, too.
I believe that's what I did. I'm just being consistent here.
I understand your concern, and it's duly noted.
Easter eggs are mythological bunny.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Motion approved. Number 132, Steve?
Resolve that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign the agreement with the New York State Department of Transportation with respect to the 2012-2013 municipal snow and ice agreements.
Is there a second?
Second.
Patty, you want to describe how this works?
Mayor, we've been partnered with New York State for, I guess, almost 20 years now, involved in a snow and ice agreement. It is a lump sum agreement, so the state applies an index every year to escalate the fee they pay us, but whether it snows or not, we get money from the state for snow plowing and ice clearing operations on the state routes that are in the village, which are 117 and 141.
I bet we overdid it last year. We earned our money last season.
Some years, we've been better than others, yes.
Okay, so this year we'll get $17,056.
Well, it's for 2012. They're a little ahead of the game.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Mindy? Or would you like to defer that and give it to Jonathan? It's long.
Wait, 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 what is this, defer all?
You always like the long one.
No, he hates the long one.
Motion to defer this to Jonathan.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby approve the following budget amendments. Increase revenue and expenses to allocate bond proceeds to the correct accounts. So we're...all of these, all right, so $350,000, bond proceeds to judgments and claims, $175,000 to DPW roof, $280,000 to DPW equipment, $300,000 to chlorination. This is the same one?
Yes, we tabled it last time.
Yes. But we didn't...did we get the answer that we needed?
We did.
Okay. $1,065,000 in property acquisitions, and I read this last time, too. 2.17...$2,170,000 total to fund expenses related to October bond issue, increase in municipal dues, final payoff of leased vehicles, weatherization of recreation building, and tree maintenance. $3,246 from legal contractual to miscellaneous charges debt service. $750 from ordinance updating expenses to legal notices. And $130 from Board of Trustees miscellaneous. Are we getting fired? Are you jockeying our pay? For the municipal association dues. $5,433.60 from contingency to the building department leased automobile final payment. $52,000 from contingency to recreation center maintenance. $10,000 from contingency to shade trees contractual totaling $71,559.60. Reverse the 8/23/10 general fund appropriation of fund balance for judgments and claims. $350,000 to decrease judgments and to increase revenue and expenses for the music festival to fund over-budgeted account, amount of $121, from the music festival to festival expenses.
Is there a second?
Second.
So that...thank you for that storm of words.
Thank you.
The short version of the long story Mindy gave you is that we recently issued $2,170,000 in bonds and are allocating it, $350,000 to judgment and claims, and that represents half of the approximately $700,000 that we owe Foxwood as a result of their tax grievance that was recently settled. $175,000 for a new roof at the Department of Public Works, which is a project that we knew we needed to undertake and is doubly important because we've received a $250,000 grant that will pay for a solar array on the roof of DPW. $280,000 for DPW equipment, which is a project we've talked about in some detail in the past whereby we are getting rid of a bunch of vehicles and replacing them with a smaller number of new vehicles that have much more utility and much more flexibility from the standpoint of the workforce. $300,000 for a chlorination plant, which is what's required by the County Department of Health as part of our water system, and $1,065,000, which is the acquisition of the Lane Plumbing property about which we have talked in the past. The rest of the items are matters of balancing out accounts because we're required to maintain a balanced account, so...any comments?
Only that was a nice, short version of Mindy's long story.
You think it wasn't short enough?
No, I would like to know what the outcome was of the...we tabled the $300,000.
Yes, we have some degree of flexibility within that, and with the idea being that nobody knows for sure where you're gonna end up on some of this stuff. For example, the next resolution is to award a bid for the roof, which is significant in less than the amount that we bonded for, so there's some degree of flexibility to have within this.
So what happens to the rest of the money? It doesn't get tracked?
It stays in debt service, it gets returned to pay off the current issue.
Or you use it for some more.
We have a call feature on the bond anyway within a few years, so...
But can we use it for a...I guess we can't use it for anything else.
You...some of these are fairly narrowly defined, but I'll have to see how the resolution reads. They're fairly explicit, usually you have to, you know, define...
Well, great, if we can spend less, that's great.
That's always the goal.
But, you know, chlorination is...can't get more definite than that.
No, and DOH is going to speak to this issue. They're going to talk with us, you know, to at least have, you know, at least explain why they feel that there's little alternative but to do this process, or if we decide not to, what the consequences would be, so...
Well, yeah. We're gonna have a conversation with them.
Yes.
They're coming in?
No, we'll meet with them.
Okay.
We're working on that. Steve made a call last Thursday, and we're trying to coordinate it.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Jonathan, one to me for.
Where sealed bids were advertised in the official village newspaper received on October 25th, 2010 for the Department of Public Works roof replacement project, and whereas bids were received as per the following and reviewed by McDonald...Donald McDonald Architect as followed. These are the bidders. DME Construction bid $116,500 for the job. Elite Roofing, $126,500. Proton Construction, $129,000. SNL Roofing, $138,000. Precision Roofing, $156,000. Seabreeze General Contractors, $167,000. Moy Constructions, $188,300. WB Contractor, contracting $198,440. And NJK Contractors, $225,920. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville, upon the recommendation of Donald McDonald Architects, hereby awards the bid for the Department of Public Works roof replacement to DME Construction. 126 Oldfield Road, Oldfield, New York, the amount of $116,500.
Is there a second?
Second.
So as mentioned in the resolution, we have a detailed letter from Donald McDonald, who's our architect on this project, and he has provided a detailed chart of references and comments about work otherwise done by DMA, DME, and come back all positive. And so we're in the fortunate position of being able to award this contract at a somewhat lower price than we thought might be the case. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Any further comments, the business?
I just want to comment on the event I attended this morning, which was the annual Veterans Breakfast with the fifth grade classroom at Pleasantville Middle School, and it was just, again, one of the nicest events to go and have the honor to attend. Ms. Triarce wasn't there for the first time, she retired, so it was a new teacher who did a wonderful job, and...yeah, it's like a long time Ms. Triarce's been there, but she was there as a special guest. And...but what was really very exciting is that at the table I was sitting at, I had Commander McFadden and also Lieutenant Colonel Teresa Scunzo, my friend and neighbor, who just returned after four tours of duty, finally in July. She's still active duty until January, but she was able to...she's highly decorated. She's three Bronze Stars, so at the...one of the kids had asked her, what is all of that? And she went through every decoration, every medal, and it was really overwhelming, what this woman has done. But the one she was most proud of was not the three Bronze Stars, which is, you know, even Commander McFadden was just totally blown away by that fact. But she received...she was in the embassy in Baghdad when they were under attack for, I think she said it lasted 60 days, and she got a combat medal. And she wears that very proudly because she said it was one of the most difficult things she had to do. But in addition to that, some of the kids asked her about the training, was it hard? And she talked about how getting older, it was harder for her to, you know, be requalified on the AK-47 and the...all of these different weapons that she had to, you know, perform, you know, pass the test in order to serve. And, you know, it was really...it was a great...it was a great morning, so...and I think the kids really enjoyed it. And Virginia Pankati did, once again, beautiful, beautiful job. It's really an event, if you can go and just stand there and watch, you should do so, so...
It's a great event. Thank you, Mindy, for doing that, pinch hitting for me, I have the plague.
Still have the plague.
But everything Mindy has said is what I experienced last year at that event, and I mean, there are so many great stories in the veterans in our community, and so relatively few opportunities to get them out, and Shane McGaffey here on the camera. few opportunities to get them out, and Shane McGaffey here on the camera at the back of the room, who is the station manager at PCTV, has done great work in working with the Veterans Roundtable and starting to record some of the stories these people have, and when the kids from the middle school come and share the event at the senior center for the Veterans Day breakfast. It's funny, I sat down when I went there last year and thought, well, you know, that probably will take a little doing to get people talking, you know?
Oh, it's amazing.
A bunch of middle school kids and a bunch of people like me interspersed by veterans, and to the contrary, hard to get a word in edgewise with the interested and engaged conversations, so.
It's really great.
It's just an example of some of the great things that go on down at Arklen Street Center, so thank you for that. After this meeting, we have an executive session regarding advice of counsel on the Thornwood Town Center incident and matters of real estate involving village property, but there being no further business for our public session. Is there a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. Sorry to have coughed a few times into the microphone. We'll see you next week at work session, Monday, November 15 at 7, and our regular meeting Monday, November 2 at 22 at 8. Thank you.